Good morning. We're going to call this meeting to order the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners for Thursday, September twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. It is nine A M. The agenda today, all action will be taken on items unless otherwise noted. No action taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board deserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners convening as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners, also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Line Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards is indicated on this or a separate separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Today's roll call, we have all commissioners in chambers. Invocation today will be given by Irene Albrighton of the First Christian Church. Please rise.
Good morning. It's good to be with you today. Let us pray together. Gracious and holy God, we began this meeting by giving you thanks for this day and for the representatives gathered here to do the work of and for Lyon County. We ask your blessing on the agenda prepared for this meeting and on the dialogue and relationships that will support the task required for the people and the environment of Lyon County. May the work stay meaningful for the ones doing it and beneficial for the ones they represent. In your blessed name we pray. Amen.
Item number four, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It's anticipated the public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each addenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Do we have any public comment this morning? I see nothing in the chambers and nothing on Zoom. So we will move on. Yeah, let's see. For possible action review and adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, anything on the agenda that you need to change? Public. Any public changes? If not, I'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm.
Yes. Resolution, what item?
Are your mics on?
Mine is. Everybody got their mics on?
A request to move the resolution for the city of Burnley to move it forward.
Item. Nineteen B, isn't it? Just make sure. Right, yeah. So you would like to make a motion, move nineteen B, is that?
Mr. Chair, we really don't. We do have the right to take items out of order, so we don't have to actually do that.
But I just need a motion.
Move, motion move nineteen B forward when you get a chance. Second.
So I have a motion to adopt the agenda and move nineteen B forward. Feel free to comment on that. If that's the case, then we'll take a vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We will. Nineteen B forward. It is nine oh five and our time certain is nine fifteen, so this would be an excellent time to do nineteen B. You'd like to come forward, Mr. Marshawn? Please, we'll recognize you as the new city manager.
Yes, thank you. Benjamin Marshawn, City of Burnley City Manager.
So we're gonna go to nineteen B on the agenda. We'll get there again. And I will read it again. For possible action review and adoption of a resolution supporting the City of Burnley's litigation related to the Truckee Canal. Yes, go ahead.
Andrew Houskin, Lyon County Manager. So in your packet was a draft resolution supporting the City of Burnley, worked with the City of Burnley's attorney on this resolution, and so I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have or.
Commissioners, any questions on the resolution? Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I fully support what we're doing here to support the City of Burnley. I just think that if I had written this resolution, it would have been a little bit stronger, and I would have called out TCID and the BOR a couple of times. However, since it was drafted by the City of Burnley's attorney, I am fully in support. Like I said, if I would have done it, it would have been a little stronger, but we'll defer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Hockidy. I just want to thank again Mr. Rigdon for his time and the presentation. I thought it was very thorough and really summed up a lot of the injustice that has kind of happened through this whole process. And more you hear the stories about this, the more you just shake your head. So again, I just wanted to thank Mr. Rigdon for his time at our last meeting. Thank you, Chairman Hockidy. No, I'm just ready for a motion when you're ready, but I didn't see enough.
Yeah, my comments basically to reiterate what Commissioner Jacobson and Commissioner Anderson said. It's very long, but I do believe it could have been stronger in some areas, but looks fine with me. Do we have any public comment?
On behalf of the City of Burnley, I want to thank you for taking this up and support our efforts in this litigation. This is a situation where the rights of citizens of Lyon County, citizens of Burnley have been disregarded by the actions of TCID and the Bureau of Reclamation. Wells are drying up, the water's been deprived. They did the, they're doing the, they proceeded with the canal lining project for three and a half miles when they could have done it over the winter seasons over three years. They shut the canal down and it's had a terrible impact on a lot of people's lives and properties. So we appreciate the support from Lyon County.
Any public comment in online or in chambers? Okay, come up through that motion.
Simon Hockidy, I'll make a motion, but would you like me to read this into the summary into the minutes or is that?
Certainly have no problem with that.
All right. Simon Hockidy, I'd like to make a motion that we approve nineteen B, the review and adoption of a resolution supporting the City of Burnley's litigation related to the Truckee Canal. The summary of this being this is resolution supporting the City of Burnley and its litigation related Truckee Canal. This resolution affirmatively declares that the City of Burnley and its residents have been properly established a right to continued recharge from the Truckee Canal under Nevada law. The EIS, prepared by Reclamation, is deficit in numerous respects and does not comply with the language or intent of the National Environmental Protection Environmental Policy Act and the Regulations Implementing Set Act. The repayment contract between Reclamation and TCID should be declared invalid as requested by the City of Burnley and because of the City of Burnley and because the City of Burnley and its residents have been irreparably harmed by the construction of Phase One project, they should not be required to pay any asset assessments to TCID to reimburse Reclamation for the cost of the project.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. All right. We're still a little ahead of the curve on. I'm certain so we will move on to item seven A for presentation only. Recognize the Lyon County District Attorney Child Support Division for their efforts during Child Support Awareness Month in August.
Good morning, Chair of Commissioners, Steve Rye, Lyon County District Attorney. I'm excited to be before you today to recognize the Child Support Office. August is Child Support Awareness Month every year. And this year, the Child Support Office took it upon themselves to do a program accepting donations and school supplies and getting those out to the families that use the Child Support Office to get child support or to pay their child support. And so it's an important month for us to recognize and appreciate those parents that use the services of the Child Support Office. As I said, by either applying for services or for paying their child support through the office, we do appreciate those parents. We also appreciate the Child Support Office with me today, Chris DeBretthauer and Annabelle Rodriguez. Bridget, Jenny, and Rebecca couldn't be here this morning, but I want to thank them for their work on this project where they were able to provide school supplies. It dovetailed nicely with the Sheriff's Office project, Backpack Project. And I also want to take a few minutes just to thank the Child Support Office for the difficult work they do. This is a tense situation often when they deal with families and children, but they come to work every day with a positive attitude, helping those parents deal with some difficult situations. So we appreciate all that they do for the citizens of Lyon County. And so today's a good chance for me to just thank them, ask the board to recognize them for their efforts in August and throughout the year. Thank you. And I asked Krista and Annabelle if they wanted to say anything. They declined.
Commissioners, any comments?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for your service. That is a touchy area, and I can imagine you get to some situations that are not pleasant. So thank you very much for what you do.
Same thing. Thank you very much for your efforts. Thank you, Chairman Hockidy. Ladies, thank you very much. Hopefully your success is far away your challenges, but you do a very difficult job and we greatly appreciate you.
It is a tough job and knowing you're dealing with kids and families, you're always on edge and they are too. So it's always a very difficult environment. So thank you for all your work on that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we're still a little ahead of our time certain at nine fifteen. So we'll go ahead and get into the commissioners' and county manager reports. I'm going to start with county manager today because I heard him say he didn't have very much to say.
Andrew Houskin, like any manager, yeah, I mean, I've been really busy with a lot of different meetings and things and working on a number of projects, but nothing that's really ready to report to the board. I did attend the Silver City Advisory Board two nights ago, so talked about a number of different issues there. O H V's and going through town and some other issues, code enforcement. So that was a good meeting. Look forward to the NACO conference next week. I'm just a reminder that I will be in Elko most of next week, so for that, so you're trying to reach me myself as best. Any questions?
No, do you have another thirty seconds worth? Thank you. I think it's about nine fifteen. I'm waiting here for about thirty seconds, as I said. So if we could have the, start with six A time certain for nine fifteen A M. for report only. Presentation by the Nevada Department of Transportation regarding the future of U S fifty Dayton Project, and we have a packet here. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Darren Tedford. I'm with the Department of Transportation Deputy Director. And we just appreciate the opportunity to come through the Lyon County today and tell you what we got going on with our Dayton project. Answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
I swear we tested it. It was working like fifteen minutes ago.
Same thing happens in Carson. Next slide, please. So you can see the limits here and in two thousand and twenty one, Endot began the U S fifty Dayton Operational Study in conjunction with Lyon County and the public to explore different concepts for enhanced highway safety, access, and operations to address what's there now and future growth. During that part, during the part of the study where we collect public comments, we've collected eighty-five public comments. The study limits encompass U S fifty from Plankton Road on West to Ney Road on the East. Currently Endot is designing a pavement preservation project within those limits. On the slide, you can just barely catch the dark blue is the limits of our project. And the orange is the limits of the operational study. So the project we're working on right now, the pavement preservation project, we do these all over the state. When we do them, we do the other things within those limits that need done within the scope of money and the type of the project we're doing. I'll get a little, I'll get much more into detail about that. Next slide, please. So here's a closer view of the study limits. You can see just east of Fortune under the attendees on the right runs right out to Bryce and Chavez Road on the east end. Couple of roads along there that you'll be very familiar with. We'll talk some more about in a minute. Next slide, please. The intent of the improvements that we're going to make besides milling off the existing pavement and replacing it is also we're, at this time, we're going to maintain two lanes in each direction. We're going to put in new signals at Cardelli Road and Six Mile Canyon. We're going to, when we come back and repave the road and restrike it, it's our intention to reduce the widths of the lanes. So the existing lanes that are out there now are approximately twelve feet wide. We intend to come back with eleven foot wide travel lanes and wider striping. The striping that's out there now is roughly four inches. We're going to put in wider striping. I'll get to more, some more details on that in a minute. As you're aware, throughout most of that stretch from Fortune, basically to the other end where there's not existing turn lanes, there's a two-way left turn lane in the center that allows for a lot of access back and forth across a very busy highway. So some of the improvements we're going to make are median islands to either protect the left turn lanes that are happening from cars coming in the opposite direction or to channelize some of the traffic going back and forth across the highway. Next slide. Thank you. So as I mentioned, these will be the benefits of the project after we're done with it. Pavement in brand-new condition, you know, you drive back and forth. There's a lot of distresses, especially in the truck lane out there. For the existing pavement's been there for quite a while. We're going to improve and increase the safety for traffic flows. Put in the signals, as I mentioned, at Cardelli and Six Mile. And then our intent is to put speed reduction signage in. We've talked about, I know that this has been talked about before at this commission. The limits of what we intend to put for speed reduction would be from Fortune to continue the forty-five mile an hour east to Six Mile and then transition to the sixty. So move that where the sixty starts now at Fortune, push it out to the east, the far side of the signal at Six Mile. Next slide. Thank you. So the way that we hope to achieve actual speed reduction is this combination of the signage, narrower travel lanes and the median islands that I mentioned. So the striping will also help. I can get into some more details on that or answer questions you have about it. And then also the increased safety will be more controlled, more protected turn movements. So whether the citizens are turning on or off of the road, there's a lot of access. It's kind of a free-for-all right now, and that's not as safe as it could be. We think we can improve the conditions out there for travelers going through and travelers going to their homes that are in these limits of the project. Next slide, please. Quick timeline on how this project is going to come to be. I mentioned we're working on the design right now, so we're in preliminary design phase here with impending fall, winter of twenty-three. Work through our environmental review and our design through twenty-four. Have our design ready to advertise in or do our final design in twenty-five. Put it out, put out the contract for bids late twenty-five and let the contractor, whoever the low bidder is, start ASAP in the spring of twenty-six. The next slide, please. Just an extra note on public outreach. As I mentioned, we've done, we did a considerable amount during the operational study, which covered this whole section. But we do the same thing, more public outreach as we develop the project. Go to mainly have citizen meetings and say, here's what the project's going to look like. Get feedback, give them information, answer questions. Also do some virtual and multilingual outreach. So try to get to as many of the stakeholders in the area as we can and get feedback for the project that we're intending to put out there. So next slide is my last slide. It has official contact information for questions to be submitted on this project. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commissioners have today best I can.
So this is a this isn't just limited to the project because you're going to do those improvements along the way. I mean, limited to the redevelopment of the roadway. So you're looking at the long range of accesses. Can you bring up that one slide and point out to me where the ITs are and stuff are going to be?
Absolutely. So go. That one's good out there. Thank you. So as I mentioned, we're going to put in signals at Riverboat and Cardelli. That's cross streets, right? Opposite sides of the road. And then Six Mile and Fort Churchill. We're going to put in signals there, so they'll have typical raised median left turn lanes like you would see in a regular signal. That's not what you asked. You asked about.
Well, I'm going to get onto that.
Okay, so first question. There had originally been the proposal in that operational study for a high T at Traditions. We're not putting that in. The reason we're not putting that in is all the houses, homeowners that live south of fifty at that spot that would be prevented from turning left out onto fifty to go back towards Dayton or go into Carson. So that was on the operational study. I would say everything that's in that operational study and the recommendations, we're not including at this time. I mentioned keeping it two lanes. It says improve it to increase it to three lanes. That's with additional traffic in the future. That's ten to fifteen years in the future with additional traffic. So there's that. There's a high T that you, the one at Traditions that was proposed in there. There was another high T proposed at a development on South Side as part of the developer improvements, and it was down by is it Rainbow or is it east west of Cardelli? Right there? So there was a high T proposed just west of Rainbow that was proposed by the developer who has come in and got your blessing to develop that property. But they have to have approved traffic plans. They can pose them. We're not going to put that high T in. It prevents the traffic from going back and forth across. So a high T is great for a protected left turn where you don't have traffic on the other side of the road.
So to give you a word, my most important thing since I got on the commission, my number one thing that I want to accomplish here is access management on highway. So this is really important to me. I look at the roadways as the highway is to connect the cities and for interstate and interstate commerce, right? And with some of these studies, I don't think you took into account some of the other aspects of it. For one thing, like one of your things in your mission statement is safety. You're talking about car safety, but I'm also looking at town like Silver Springs. And if you look at how we developed Silver Springs and through Stagecoach, we made it so that the flow of traffic can keep going. We don't reduce the speed. If anything, we can increase the speed. To me, we have to have more of these offsetting high Ts or maybe not even intersections that are lit, but maybe high Ts that are controlled. I think that the trucking industry hasn't been. I think you were localized in looking at what to do in the Dayton area a lot. I look at medical, our hospitals are in Carson City. So any slowdown is going to cost us more. Anyone show time to the county is going to cost us more money in the commerce in any way, shape, or form. Even time with our families. We shop in Dayton. That's going to continue. That is going to add ten more minutes every time I go shopping. When you, ten minutes isn't a lot of time, but over a period of time it is. So and it counts for everything. I've noticed that when people slow down, when the speed slows down, people get jammed up and it doesn't really solve the solution, but people accessing the road as much as they they still shoot out in front of everybody. It's like watching a traffic accident. You go by, everybody hits their brakes. It needs the speed to start dispersing the traffic out again. I'd like to see the speed limits up, not down. When I see the foot traffic, when I see people jogging on the highway, when I see bicycles riding down the highway, that tells me that we need to do something to get them off the highway, and that's to get those those frontage roads done. Get them to where we can maintain them off the highway. They can enjoy going from point A to point B. There's a big difference between highway and a boulevard, and you can't replace a highway. You can, but it's it's not easy. We got something we have to preserve, and that's part of your mission statement is to preserve that highway. And I think you're creating a boulevard. I mean, we should strive to go with other solutions, look at it more in depth. I know this is preliminary studies. We got coming into spring, but I think we should open it up even to higher higher amount of people. I know that just like when we fenced off the horses, we didn't slow down traffic. We fenced off horses, solved the solution of that, and to me, be more solution oriented. I think that's about all I have to say at the moment. I might have to come back by time.
Thank you, Chairman Hockidy. I was just curious, sir. Mr. Tedford, on we have the anticipated start date, but of construction, do you have an anticipated how long this project is looking at lasting or is that through the bid process we'll figure that out?
No, typically we have an estimate of the working days. We'll know what construction season it's going to take. Last time we did this section, it took less than a year. This time with the signal improvements, roughly one construction season, maybe bleed over into the second with wrap up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Firstly, I'm not in favor of reducing the width of the travel lanes. We have a lot of large vehicles out here, and they kind of have trouble now staying in their lanes. So I don't really
Agree with, with reducing the width of the travel ways. I think that. Will also make people a little, a little more easy, uneasy when you have large vehicles closer to you. So I, I'm, I'm not in favor of that. As far as the schedule. What can we do to? To accelerate that? I mean, this, this is not the first roadway you guys rehabilitated. I don't understand why it takes three years of planning to do something you do every day. And, and. And I think until we get those, those traffic signals installed, we're not gonna do anything to slow down speed. Now, and you know, some people have suggested that we lower the speed limit now. I personally don't think that's gonna do any good because people drive how they feel comfortable. You know, the other transportation meetings I've been to, they say that you should set the speed limit within five, five miles per hour. What, eighty percent of the people are driving? You lowered the speed limit now. It's not gonna have any effect, I don't believe, except for as Sheriff Pope said in another, another briefing. You're gonna have people that comply with the speed limit, then everybody else trying to get around them. So that, I think. Maybe actually inc- increase the, the danger on the highway. So. It's, I, I don't think we're gonna slow that traffic down until we install those signals. So if there's any way we can get the signals installed quicker. I would appreciate that. And then he, he said there's not gonna be a high T at Traditions. By understanding, there's gonna be a fully signalized intersection, correct?
Eventually. That is part of this program.
Okay. Yeah, because I, like I said, until you have stoplights to, to break up the flow of traffic, you're not gonna slow anybody down on fifty. And, and I, I just, I do, I encourage you to try to, if we can accelerate this, let's do it. So we gotta.
I'm happy to answer your questions. I usually sitting taking notes on public comment, so I'm, it sounds like I'm not gonna answer your questions, but I'm writing them down and I, I don't. I'll try to compile them and answer your questions and then follow up as needed. So I just wanted to add on with that, uh.
With that. Why you're gonna uh change, he brought up the, the size of the lanes. And I understand that's, uh, the, put it down as calming effect. It's calming of the traffic, not calming of my nerves. Right? And there's a completely different, and when you look at it, it's two different ways of doing that. And I understand when you start putting everybody into funnel, it same reason why we go into those roundabouts, you always make a left before you make a right. To make sure you slow down, but it also drives my nerves up. So I don't know if that's a good safety thing to have everybody pins and needles as they, you know, I'd rather have it the. Regular width and full speed.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I, I too would like the ultimate design to be able to accommodate a higher speed because we have so many people that commute. And so much truck traffic and time is money. So if we're gonna do this, I'd like to ultimately have the speed limit. At sixty or higher.
So I, 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 Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. I have to acknowledge that you're giving me both opinions on raise the speed or lower it. I understand that. And to everybody's point. And the excellent example of out at Stagecoach, the way that we. Design that road with some frontage roads out at Stagecoach. Is allows it to be higher speed, carry the traffic through and let the slower speed be on the side and have limited access. The design for that in Dayton, just on the other side of the hill would be. It would limit almost everybody's access because they're not a, there's not a stoplight in Stagecoach, right? So the idea that. Um, that we would be able to do that same design in Dayton. Would take a bunch of property because the right of ways lighter, uh, wider. So take houses down both sides, make room for frontage roads, widen, put the offset left turn lanes. And everybody's access would be a half mile in the direction that they didn't want it to be in general. That would, that would be my main concern because the character of that road in Dayton is not the same as in Stagecoach, the. Access, more houses, more people that aren't just going through and randomly less frequently making left turns. Uh, the stoplight that we do have Fortune coming out of, uh, Fortune and going east. Character of that road is not the same as Stagecoach, so we'd be, we'd be, it would be difficult to implement that same design there. Um. Another point, uh, you said your nerves and you said uneasy and the idea of narrowing the lanes. A foot, right? Uh, the. Your trucks are eight feet wide plus their mirror. Semi trucks are only eight feet wide plus their mirror. So going from twelve to eleven. Would make people less comfortable driving as fast as they were. That is the idea. If we wanted to have a forty-five mile an hour speed zone through there. If we don't design it like a highway, which are twelve foot lanes and wide and straight. We design it differently, then we can, we can expect the drivers to drive differently. So there is a trade-off. You said exactly what we hope to have be the results is people aren't as comfortable driving at higher speeds. And lower the speed limit with it. So that is a trade-off. I'm acknowledging that that's a trade-off.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, real quick to your point on the three years of planning. Basically, every project that we do like this takes three years of planning. So we do it all the time. It's a continuous effort. It's, it's uh federal, we're using federal money on this, whether it was federal or state. The environmental restrictions and the design if required. Basically, every project like this takes three years, just, just for your information. Um, we, we don't, uh, to your point about putting the signals in earlier, we don't. Uh, necessarily have the ability to do that, to do that because it's part of the design that we're bringing in instead. Restripe, do the left turn lanes, do the changes at, um. Riverboat and Cardelli to make sure they're straight across because Cardelli shifted over to the west a little bit. Uh, all of that affects the whole roadway in between, so we, we wouldn't be able to do that signal early. Um, and. Uh, uh, again, I acknowledge the, the comments from the commissioners that. We want lower speed and higher speed at the same time and for good purposes.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to comment again on, on the narrative lanes. Yeah, there's, there's a big vehicle down there that I'm approaching. And I said, I'm gonna speed up to get around it because of the narrow lanes. I'm not gonna slow down. Okay, I, I'm gonna get around that, that vehicle as fast as I can. And, um. If you can't accelerate. The installation of the traffic signals, how about putting up some signs, you know, dangerous intersections ahead or congested area or something, just to get people's attention?
Uh, that's, that's possible. Um. Typically, we would put a congested area ahead sign. On the east end of the project and come in versus closer to the busy intersections, but. Uh, that's something that's possible.
So. I, I, I look at the sins of the past and, and what, what's happened in, in other communities and, and, and other projects. And. What I see is a difference of rural attitude compared to, to, the city. And to me, uh, to go a half mile down a road is nothing. I mean, uh, to go a mile down the road to either if I. Came into one, it was a mile down that way or a mile down that way. That's four, four laps around a high school track. In a car, in a straight line, that's pretty quick. But that would ease the stuff out on the highway. And to me, that's what we want because as these communities grow, they're gonna have to have interactivity within the community. We want them, we don't want them all to use. The highway as a boulevard. And that's what I, where I'm getting at is as we grow, it's just gonna get worse. Right now, we're not ready for intersections, in my opinion. What I think we are ready for is signalized ITs. Where like out of Johnson Lane, to where you can keep the flow going. You've got the, the mechanism out there, the electricity and everything else. But then everybody can flow. And we don't end up with the congestion right now. In the rural areas, we travel to wherever we. Everything we do. It's not like, like the city. I mean, for me to get groceries, it's, you know, twenty minutes, thirty minutes to go get groceries. So, you know, going down a, an easy spot to get a good place to. Pull out on the highway is important and eliminate all those accesses. I'd rather get rid of half of our, especially on ninety-five A, if you turn the corner and look at it. In Silver Springs, I'd like to get rid of half of those uh entrances and just have a frontage road to where we can do stuff. That's a different topic, but. Still access management. I'd like to go. I'd like the solutions to be to can, keep our highways.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. This in. In Stagecoach, when we did do that, if you remember the. People that owned the mini marks, they were taking off their access and telling them they had to drive a half mile down the road. Came to the governor and said, we don't like this. This is not acceptable. You're taking away our business. You're gonna. The guy over here has a direct in access because of the spacing we had to provide. And this guy didn't because of the half mile. And that's taken away, that's taken away stakeholders' access. So that challenge in this area would be amplified.
Well, you still have access, though they will still have any, even in your.
Oh, yeah, they still have access.
I know if I, I've applied for N dot. Application for access. And it says right in the policy, it can be restricted. I can be revoked. Up to end on. So to me, it's a matter of keeping the number one priority is the highway. Keep it access and, and moving. Yeah, once we eliminate that, then what do we do? We're, we're screwed for our medical, everything else out in the, farther out. So to me, trading off one. Is, is going, I don't intend to consequence is a hard, a lot harder on the other ones. I know if, if, if I had a heart attack and was trying to get to the hospital. I really don't wanna slow down. I know if you drive down through Dayton, right now, if you're doing sixty-five in the fast lane, you're holding up traffic. I don't know what the, what the speeds are out there right now, but it would probably show you that it should be increased. Same thing, I can say the same thing about USA Powerway. I think that's, you've got enough. Hopefully, we could keep these conversations going.
Uh, yeah, I'd definitely be interested in keeping the conversation going because. Uh, what you're requesting of me is in clear direction for us to follow on this. We did a. Operational study, we did corridor study, we gave options for the boulevard, a freeway. And this configuration, this configuration was supported the most with signals, with slowing down.
But that wasn't.
Public on there.
Yeah, but it wasn't done by this commission and it wasn't done by, uh, that I'm aware of. And I think it was in the Dayton area, not in. You didn't reach out to the other communities, how they would be affected.
Was in Dayton, agreed, and it was stakeholders that came to the public meetings and gave input, so. Um, again, this plan that we have moving forward with the schedule would have to change and. Um, we have to have some discussion about. We, like I said, you're giving me both feedback, slow down and speed up. So, and, and make a freeway or don't make a freeway. And, and not necessarily a freeway, you said, like the configuration in Stagecoach, but. That's time and money and it's not twenty-twenty-six. It's buying right away on both sides so that we can put in frontage roads. And, uh, taking away people's access, going through that process. That's. That's an extra at least year for buying property along there. Never mind about these signals because they wouldn't be there. And, um, having that redo all of our public outreach is basically what we would have to do. We can, I'm happy to. Do that, uh, and have the commission involved, um. Maybe some kind of combined public hearing that you could hold within a commission meeting to have. Stakeholders here to speak and for you to hear it. The idea would be to make, um, this section similar and keep it high speed because you go sixty-five up and over the hill. Into that section in Stagecoach has the speed limit. It operates high speed and fast and it has left turns. Half mile or every mile apart with frontage roads. That's an extra year and a half of design and buying right away on this. And, and it wasn't what we heard from the stakeholders, but I'm happy to revisit that and, and get everybody on the same page.
Well, sometimes what I've seen on the stakeholders is, because I went down to Dayton and I asked people, what do you think of the forty-five? And when I ask people, they're like, oh yeah, that sounds like a good idea because that's what was put before them.
Right.
And then I said, well, what do you think about the D cell lanes and XL lanes and doing, and get rid of that, get rid of the suicide lane because to name that for a reason. They like that better. So to me, it was throwing up those options. That all of a sudden, and once you do this, it's, it's long term. I mean, and to me, to do a short term solution. Might screw us for the next fifty years because. We're not getting a new freeway and we're not getting a new highway.
But that's the only spot for a freeway or a highway to go through town, agreed. And based on the operational study, it, like I said before, it suggested adding extra lanes in the future. But not yet because the traffic doesn't warrant it, but. Uh, i- if we want to revisit this, we can and hit the commission and, uh. And the citizens on the same page before we move forward.
So when we, when we built firmly and went back before stores were back in the seventies, right? Well, how we sold firmly was you could be home. Ten minutes before the people that going down Spanish Springs would be in their house. It was because you can get there and get there fast. The economic impact, the, the ability to put housing and stuff like that further out. This is also gonna restrict that too. So economically, it's gonna hurt that area. Outside that reach. So.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yes, um, I'm the one who brought forward the resolution to lower the speed limit right now. And I agreed to do that because I do think that in its current configuration and with the. The traffic studies that have been, have been done at Fort Churchill. That, that's warranted at this time, but ultimately I'd like the design for the improvements. To allow us to go back to a higher speed. Safely.
Okay, understood. Change the road in the future. Um, also that was, like I mentioned, that was one of the options presented in the. Uh, operational study was make it a freeway elevated crossings with frontage roads. To handle the traffic to get them to the crossings. It just wasn't selected by the stakeholders at that time, so, uh, and, and. That's also possible. Uh, anything's possible by the right away from the people that live there. Change the intersections, put in frontage roads and, uh, you know, the dollar limits in time, anything's possible.
We, we do also have a lands bill that we're working on, will be talked about later on this meeting, where we're trying to, uh, actually get property that's gonna. Enable us to put a bridge across and come back out into that. And to me, that doesn't make. A lot of sense putting everybody in there into one spot without a, to me, it'd be better for a great separation at that point, which then you're talking about the same.
Right.
Thing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I wanna, um, just two, two comments. You just. You know that we're gonna need three lanes eventually on that road. So if we don't do it now, you have to come back and do a whole another rehabilitation project to add the third lane?
Basically, it would be the timing of the next time we come back to widen it in ten or fif- um. The next time we come back to rehabilitate it in ten or fifteen years. That's about the cycle that that pavements do on.
Yeah, I, I'd like to take another look at that, put in the third lane now. I think that would help reduce the congestion through some of those areas. And, and, and. No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say the trade-off for more vehicles in a lane who don't feel like it's a freeway. And. High speed congestion, not congestion, meaning bumper to bumper traffic, but. If you don't have a car in front of you, like when you come over the hill and go on the stagecoach and everybody turned off in Dayton. Because they lived, I'm obviously oversimplifying, but it turns sixty-five and it's easy to go eighty because there's nobody in front of you. So whether there's two lanes with people or three, you spread the cars out, it's easier to go faster.
You could say forty-five, you still go eighty.
Ab- absolutely. And so that's why I'm saying if it's designed physically like a freeway, that's how people will drive it. So reduce lanes, median islands would make it so people would drive forty-five. We come back and tear that out in the future, that's wasted money. We should decide now what you want. Uh, as a group between the commissioners and the constituents, the stakeholders, and then we can design and build that depending on budget and time.
And then my hopefully final question for you today. Um, yeah, Commissioner Hendricks mentioned that, you know. Um, we did have a proposed resolution to ask you to lower the speed limit. Some, some of our citizens want that, some of them don't. In your professional opinion, given the condition of the road today as it exists, would simply lower into speed limit, do anything?
It would not. It will, it would cause a problem that you heard from the sheriff last month that you'd have. People traveling at two different speeds now, trying to obey the law or trying to drive like the road is designed. So the road is designed straight, twelve foot lanes like a freeway. And drive like you're on a freeway. So I, I don't believe that lowering the speed limit now would have the effect. It might cause different problems.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Thank you, sir.
Uh, you're welcome. So will the department only get to work in Lyon County to. Uh, further investigate how we wanna improve this road, make changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Hey, so we are going to go back, uh, to public comment on this since the commissioners have had their questions. Do we have anything from the public? No? Good. Oh, we do. Mr. Wright.
Commissioner meetings are getting to be as much fun as going to Smith's. You keep moving this thing around, but I still found it. I'm Russ Wright, I live in Dayton. Um, I doubt seriously if there's any statistical data that would support changing a lane from twelve to eleven is going to slow down traffic. I do su- suggest that there's statistical data in Sheriff's Department that narrower lanes increases accident and citation activity. So to support or suggest that reducing the lanes from twelve to eleven will slow down traffic, perhaps we should reduce all the lanes to eight. Because then that would really slow down traffic and nobody would get anywhere and it would take Commissioner Keller all day to get to Dayton to shine.
Thank you, sir. All right, we are going to move on then to number eight. That would be our commissioner comments, and I'm going to start with Commissioner Hendricks.
I attended Dayton Valley Days and as always, it was a very nice event, uh, bigger than in previous years, it seemed like. And then last night I did um, attend the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District and had a presentation on the rehabilitation they're going to be doing on Marlet Reservoir and that that's going to be quite an undertaking, just trying to get people and equipment in there.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, not much. I attended the Silver City Citizens Advisory Board Tuesday night along with Mr. Haskins. And uh, it's always interesting up there. Um, they uh, yeah, have a, an issue with OHV traffic going through and they wanted to know if we could ban OHVs. And of course, we can't do that. But then they wanted to know if we could just ban OHVs for people who don't live there, so they can still use their OHV to go to the post office. So that's kind of interesting, but it's good. And then uh, Campo is in the process, and I attended the first workshop um, yesterday of putting together a and I'm a butcher to name of this, but it's a local road safety plan that that um is a requirement to access some different federal funds, since part of Lyon County is is part of Campo. Um, looking forward to participating in that. And it's going to be interesting to see how the Campo process comes out and melds with the end dot process. You know, but I I did send uh, Mr. Haskin and he uh, the agenda packet for that workshop. If you guys would like it, I know uh, Commissioner Keller, you especially might be interested because it's actually got data. You know, we actually got some data from the state for a change. So and tha- that's all I have. Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, except I do, I do want to thank uh, Pastor Irene Albritten for the invocation day. That's really special for me every time she gets to do that. See, that's how she is my sister. Thanks.
Commissioner Keller.
Well, I attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board. I uh, headed the planning commission. Tended the nine eleven ceremonies in Fernley. Uh, the Linda Carr was a Patriot of the Year and well deserved. Like to see that. Uh, tended the Fernley City Council last night and uh, and it was interesting. There was a couple of things that that they had on their agenda, like annexing the county properties, ended the city, they're gonna bring it back for an agenda item. And um, also uh, for the people in Fernley, it's homecoming tomorrow, so show up. That's it.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I want to thank the fellow commissioners who were at the nine eleven ceremony. Um, that's always been near and dear to me. Uh, saw the FIS kids there, tradition we started way back when. Um, and kind of educating and keeping that at the forefront um, of Patriots Day and and what precipitated that. Um, so it's always good to see those kids um, at those ceremonies for sure. Um, General Berry was there, he did a great job, uh, just a fantastic speaker. Um, energy, wisdom, um, patriotism, his message uh, resonated, I think, with everybody there. Um, Sheriff and his wife were there. We had a a really good turnout, so I just want to thank North Lion Fire uh, Chief Nichols uh, for hosting that. And uh, as Commissioner Keller said, congratulate uh, Ms. Linda Carr as the Patriot of the Year. Um, and uh, that award is special to me as I received that a few years ago, so. Um, but again, uh, um, just thanks to those folks for putting that on. I know the FIS continues to do a great deal with uh, the Veterans Day. Um, and uh, so that's coming up as well. Um, and then finally, I'd just like to welcome my mom. She's here in the crowd today, so she's supervising me. So thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
Also, uh, like to say that the nine eleven ceremony was fantastic. Guys did a great job up there in North Lion County, uh, fire there did a an excellent job presenting the information and uh, having a terrific turnout. Uh, I've attended the Mason Valley Conservation District, Smith Valley Conservation District and uh, the Smith Valley Park Board and also the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Um, a lot of activities going on there. Uh, some of the bad activities that have been going on, we had a couple of cars broken into Saturday night at the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation Dinner, which is something very unusual for Smith Valley. We did have uh, items stolen from cars. Speaking of breaking into cars, uh, we need to watch out. The bears are breaking into the cars. I just got a call this morning that some bears broke into cars. And I don't think they're the ones that broke into the ones Saturday night. As the bears eat the food, but they don't steal the purses and belongings that are in there. Um, I want to thank uh, especially BLM, but a few, few people here in in the county, uh, we had uh, Mr. Haskin and uh, Ms. Allison and Mr. Homan and Chief Nightingale there for the fire that we had, uh, lightning strike on Tuesday and Wednesday. I believe we probably still have some fire crews standing by. Uh, they were gonna spend the night last night to make sure that the wind didn't kick up and we'd had some pretty significant wind last night, so I was concerned that the fire would kick back up. But the uh, aircraft came in and put in some retardant, pretty much surrounded it. The helicopters are flying all day dumping water. Totally do appreciate them out there, making sure that uh, we didn't have the fire burn down to the east side of the mountain there and get into some of the property. Uh, but we also had structured protection crews, so it was um, it was a, it's very um, I would say successful firefight and at this point, I think we've pretty much got it taken care of. Uh, last thing is to uh, thank Doug Homestead. He came over to get some uh, things taken care of for fun days coming up on September thirtieth and October first. He met with me over there to discuss some of the work that needed to be done prior to the event occurring. But that was uh, very much a nice meeting and we got a lot of things accomplished that day. So um, that's pretty much for me. I will uh, move on then from Commissioner comments to elected official reports. Do we have, no, Sheriff doesn't have anything. No, nobody's jumping up. That was good on that one. We'll move on to number ten, appointed official reports. Mr. Cariola is coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Louis Cariola, Community Development Director, quick report. Staffing at in community development continues to be in flux. I'm sorry to report that Mr. Bill Roth, our senior planner uh, has decided to, I think, retire and enjoy his life. Um, we'll miss him. Uh, I'll miss his his professional demeanor and his excellent reports. Uh, he will be seeing through his final items through the October planning commission, so I expect you'll see him uh, at your first board meeting. And then uh, better news, I'm happy to also report that we recently uh, passed our audit from the State Flood Plane Manager for our flood plane development processing and issuance of flood plane development permits and elevation certificates. So in May, a member of FEMA District Nine, the State Flood Plane Manager uh, did uh, conducted a field survey of of selected projects within Lyon County that were within flood plane development uh, areas and um, again, they they were happy to see that we are appropriately processing our building permits uh, with the proper documentation. I'd especially like to thank Pamela Rogers in the Building Department who directly assisted me in compiling all the information. Uh, and our engineers at Dow also were integral in compiling the information. Available for any questions?
Question? Nope. Thank you, sir. Do we have any other pointed officials? No, we, well, we do have uh, Miss Holmes. You're up.
Good morning, Shaila Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services. For the record, I just wanted to share with you guys this Saturday. Newington Senior Centers Ball Festival and Craft Fair will be taking place there at Mountain View Park um, from one to seven. So if you guys are able and free and available to come out and support them, they would absolutely love to see you. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Andrew, anything on page two? Nope. Okay. We're good. Any questions for Ms. Holmes? And we will move on to uh, Advisory Board reports. Item eleven. Seeing none. We're moving right along to item twelve. Consent agenda. Action be taken on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Uh, Commissioners, anything on item twelve A through twelve G? Any public input on that? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we pr- well, approved a consent agenda as presented for items twelve A through twelve G.
Okay, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We will move on to item thirteen. Back to the regular agenda. Advisory Board, thirteen A for possible action, acknowledge your resignation of Serena Martin from the Mount House Advisory Board. And the Commissioner's comments on that, other than thank you very much for your service on the board.
Exactly.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the resignation of Serena Martin from the Mount House Advisory Board and thank her for her service.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion in a second. Do I have any public comment before we make any action on this? Okay, then uh, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor acknowledging the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thirteen B for possible action, acknowledge the resignation of Brittany Bennett from the Smith Valley Park and Recreation Board. And uh, any Commissioner comments on that, other than thank you to Brittany? You know, she's uh, gonna be missed there at the park board. And thank you, thank her for her service on the board. She did a pretty good job. Every time that I was there, she had good comments from the Rotary. So I will ask for a motion on that.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we acknowledged the resignation of Brittany Bennett from the Smith Valley Park and Recreation Board and thank her for her service.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment at all on that? Seeing none, I need a motion. Uh, I've got the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to fourteen for possible action, approve change order number three for the lift station, number two A replacement project with Peak Brothers Construction to extend the contract duration by sixty days to allow for additional time to resolve pumping system vibrations. Mr. Ruketa.
Chairman Hockaday, Commissioners David Ruketa for the record. So um, I, the, I, we still need the extension, uh, change order request extension of time on this, but I do have some good news to report. Just two weeks ago, when, you know, this was due um, for the public notice process two weeks ago, so we asked for two months. Um, since then, what the engineers have been able to do is identify what this anomaly uh, vibration issue is in the system. And so they're in the process of making operational changes right now um, with the existing infrastructure and controls. Um, and we believe that we're going to be able to resolve this problem. So um, there still may be some additional work that might be needed by the contractor. Um, they still have a small items on their punch list to um, to uh, finish. Um, so we're confident now that we're going to be able to resolve this issue, but you know, when we wrote this, we, two weeks ago, it was just a lot of unknown time. So I would still request that this change order, you know, go through and uh, hopefully then we'll wrap up this project.
Commissioner, questions?
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion um, that we approve change order number three for the lift station, number two A replacement project with Peak Brothers Construction to extend the contract duration by sixty days to allow for additional time to resolve pumping system vibrations.
Second.
So Commissioner Jacobson, motion and second by Commissioner Henderson. Um, were there any public comments on that?
No.
Okay. Then I am asking for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Human Services for a possible action, accept grant award from the U S Department of Health and Human Services Administration for children and families for a hundred nineteen thousand dollars for youth mentorship services to the Fernley area of Lyon County. And Ms. Holmes, did you have anything on that? No? Yes.
I have nothing to add. You guys have the grant award. This is a federal appropriation um, from last year. And we are hoping to partner with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and we're just working out that sub award uh, partnerships. You guys will be seeing that hopefully on your next agenda item in October, but this is just accepting that federal appropriation award.
Okay. Comments from Commissioners, questions? Anything from the public? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we accept the grant award from the U S Department of Health and Human Services Administration for children and families for one hundred nineteen thousand dollars for youth mentorship services to the Fernley area of Lyon County.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Fifteen B for possible action, approve the services of independent contractor and a tippet in the amount of thirty thousand four hundred and twenty dollars to provide behavioral health clinician services with the mobile outreach safety team. Okay, uh, again, Ms. Holmes.
Uh, again, I have nothing to add to this agenda item. You guys have the contract in front of you. It is um, the standard template for a contract. This is not a new service. It's just a new contractor who's coming on board with us uh, to provide these services. And it's not fulfilling the full amount of services needed to meet our grant award, so you guys will be seeing an additional contract coming forward for uh, additional services from another um, contractor, most likely going to be Carson Tahoe Behavioral Health Services.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Holmes? No. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion on fifteen B.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the services of independent contractor and a tippet in the amount of thirty thousand uh, four hundred and twenty dollars to provide behavioral health clinician services with the mobile outreach safety team, otherwise known as MOST.
Second.
Second.
That I've got. Commissioner Keller got in there first. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Sixteen A for possible action, improve memorandum of understanding between Lyon County and Mineral County politi- political subdivisions of the state of Nevada to allow Lyon County to provide services of a building inspector for FY twenty four to perform building inspector services for mineral on an hourly and limited basis. Okay, and Mr. Cariola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Louis Cariola, Community Development Director. Uh, recently, I was contacted by the building official of Mineral County uh, who pointed out that they have uh, one or two commercial projects that require building inspector services that they don't have staff qualified uh, to inspect. Uh, as you know, you recently approved a critical labor shortage in order for community development to bring on some of the staff. Bring on some of the staff members that previously were part of Far West, now now called Dow. Uh, the private engineering service that not only supplied Lyon County with building inspector services, but also Mineral County. Uh, when Lyon County was fortunate enough to bring them onto staff, we also inadvertently, um, stripped Mineral County's ability to, uh, get those private consultant services. Uh, as a result, we drafted this agreement. I worked with the district attorney's office. Um, to make sure that this, this agreement is sound. I did confirm with Mineral County's district attorney this morning. That yesterday, the Mineral County Board of Commissioners approved the agreements. Uh, essentially, it's, it's simply a, um, uh, agreement that, that it's maxed out at twenty-four hours per month. Um, communication between myself and the Mineral County Building Official would ensure that Lyon County's priorities would be met first. Um, but, uh, we're, we're in the interest of, of working with our neighboring, uh, jurisdiction. We'd like your approval for this. I, I did have one comment, uh, recital number three purpose. Uh, I'd like to provide the clerk with amended version and, and just strike that second sentence. I only noticed this morning, there is a mention of exhibit one, uh, which would be a description of typical services, and that was not provided today. Uh, the building inspector position has a description of typical services, so. That is what the, uh, the service rendered to, to Mineral County would consist of. I'm available for any questions.
Questions?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. Just, just one question, and the effect on your manpower.
Right, so we do again, uh, have the right, and we've already had that discussion. It is outlined in the agreement that, that Lyon County needs to approve any of the timing. Uh, at this point, we have seen a little bit of a dip in plan review, uh, requirements and. Respectfully, Sean Keating, our, our, our plans reviewer now is, is excellent at his job. So Mister Keating's very efficient. And as a result, we're able to kind of move this around. The anticipated project really is only one. I believe it's a commercial marijuana grow facility. So I, I think really this request has been based on one project in Mineral County.
That, that's just always my chief concern is that you have the manpower that you need to do your job.
Of course.
Right, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Uh, while I share Commissioner Henderson's sentiments, I also. Just want to state that that's what makes the rural so nice is that we do work together. Um, and, uh, I think this is a wonderful opportunity where we can help out Mineral County is. They don't, they're not big enough to staff, um, this type of position, so. Um, and as we're seeing, um, to go out and. Um, hire on a group to come in and do this is probably financially, uh, burdensome on Mineral County as well. Because these consulting groups are taking a bigger and bigger chunk every time, so. Um, Mister Keating and, and yourself, Mister Carriola, thank you for, for working with the fellow neighboring county.
I'm just ready.
Okay, you're ready. Alright, any public comment? Uh, then I am ready for a motion from Commissioner Keller.
I'd like to move to approve a memorandum of understanding with Lyon County and Mineral County Political Subdivisions of the state of Nevada to allow Lyon County provide services. Building inspector for fiscal year twenty-four to perform building inspector services for mineral on an hourly and limited basis. With corrections as presented.
Second.
Alright. Motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you for the presentation, Mister Keller.
Chairman Hockaday, can we take five?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, let's take five minute break, be back, let's say, uh, ten twenty. Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. It is ten twenty-one, and we will be moving on to item seventeen. The District Attorney's Office. Now get ready to read this long one here. For possible action, approve the resolution to, number one, approve the proposed final conditional stipulation resolving the water right claims of the Walker River Paiute Tribe. And the United States of America in the Walker River litigation in the United States District Court, case number three, colon seventy-three dash. E V dash zero zero one two seven dash M M D. And two, authorize legal counsel in consultation with the Lyon County manager. To A, enter into the exec- execute. And execute. A final stipulation on behalf of Lyon County based substantially on the terms of the proposed final conditional stipulation. Which is attached to the resolution of the District Board. B, file the stipulation in the District Court in case number three, colon seventy-three dash C V dash zero zero one two seven dash M M D. And C, take all other reasonable actions as may be necessary to implement the stipulation, including any necessary modifications to the Walker River decree. Mister Ry.
Thank you, Mister Chair, Steve Ry, District Attorney. That's definitely an attorney agenda item.
Kind of short though, yeah.
Apologize for that, uh, coming before you today on this agenda item, just before I start, Dale Ferguson. Attorney for Walker River Irrigation District is on Zoom, available for questions, and also present today is Bert Ryan, the, the manager of the Irrigation District. Uh, also available to answer questions if you have any. And so just a brief background. In this particular matter, the case was filed back in nineteen ninety-two. By the United States and the Walker River Paiute Tribe, uh, claiming some additional water rights. Um, under the Walker River decree, which was, um, started in, I believe nineteen twenty-five, was finalized in nineteen thirty-six. And in that action, they asked for additional water rights, uh, related to reservoir, uh, surface water irrigation rights, groundwater rights, livestock rights. Um, and the litigation has been pending for the last thirty years. Uh, lots of things have happened during that period. A lot of work's gone into this, um, with the Irrigation District, the United States and the tribe. And they've come to this settlement, and Lyon County has been considered one of the principal dependents in this case. Although the county's not a large water rights holder on the Walker River decree. Obviously, we have significant interest in, um, the economic advantages of the river. And river system, what it does for Lyon County and its residents. Obviously municipal uses, industrial uses, and also domestic wells. Uh, so. The law, county's asked to approve this stipulation for agreement. Well, what it does is it settles those claims from the Walker River Paiute Tribe in the United States. Um, and. Generally affirms the, uh, water rights that they are already using. On the, um, the reservation in the United States installments. And it also, uh, gives a priority which is consistent with their existing priority in the decree, which is the top priority in eighteen fifty-nine. That priority for their water rights. Uh, this would allow them to continue to use, uh, whatever reservoir. And some other things that have been part of the litigation for the last thirty years. Uh, the recommendation from the attorneys is that the county approve this settlement. And authorize counsel and, uh, the county manager to work with them to get it finalized through the court process. And we've pre- prepared a resolution for that. Uh, that explains some of the background, and the stipulation also includes some of the background. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, uh, but at this time, the recommendation from the DA's office and the county's attorney is to. Approve the stipulation.
Questions, comments? Just a question. Oh, yes.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Yeah, th- thank you, Mister Ryan. It was fascinating reading, as I told you. But in your opinion, Lyon County's not harmed by this in any way.
Uh, yes, that's right. This would be beneficial to Lyon County, as far as I can tell from everything, and from speaking with. With Bert and the attorneys for the Irrigation District, this is a beneficial settlement.
Okay, thank you.
And the other part, the tribe and states.
Any other questions for the other two gentlemen, Mister Brian or Mister Ferguson? No? And thank you to both of you for being available, and, um, do we have any public comment? If not, I will look for a motion.
Mister Chair, I moved that we approved the resolution to. One, approve. The proposed final conditional stipulation resolving the water rights claims of the Walker River Paiute Tribe in the United States of America. In the Walker River litigation in the United States District Court, case number three. Seventy-three dash C V dash zero zero one two seven dash M M D. And two. Authorize legal counsel in consultation with the Lyon County manager to A, enter into and execute a final stipulation on behalf of Lyon County. Based substantially on the terms of the proposed final conditional stipulation, which is attached to the resolution of the District Board. B, file the stipulation in the District Court in case number three dot seven three E V zero zero one two seven M M D. And C, take all. Other reasonable actions as may be necessary to implement the supplement, the stipulation, including any necessary modifications to the Walker River decree.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Harrison, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Oh, okay.
Before the motion, okay.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving to eighteen A. For possible action, approve purchase of central ballot scanning system with shipping in the amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. To be funded from a budget transfer from general fund contingency. Yes.
Um, Shelby Silveira, Chief Deputy Clerk Treasurer. Stacy had asked me to fill in for her today because she is at a conference. Our office currently has two ballot scanners that were purchased in two thousand seventeen and are heavily relied upon. During election time, we believe that the purchase of a third ballot scanner would help us by scanning more ballots at once. And in the event one were to experience mechanical issues, serve as a backup. There is an upfront cost of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars that we are requesting to be transferred from the contingency fund. We have confirmation that the state. Will reimburse the cost of this purchase. If there are any questions, I can try and answer them for you to the best of my ability, or come back with more information at a later time.
Commissioners, questions, comments?
I have a comment. Um, I'm going to oppose this just because of the Dominion software. Um, I'd like to see our clerk's office go to an open source where. It, the accuracy of the software can be checked by our own people. Um, that's my issue with this.
I'll make a comment, uh. Note second with, with, uh, Commissioner Hendricks, I'm gonna vote for it, but I do want to go, you guys to go in that direction.
County Manager.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, I do want to clarify something for the record, um. While the state has, um, said that they will, um, potentially reimburse us for this, we are asking for this to come out of contingency at this time, um, just because they will not reimburse us until afterwards, and. There's not a guarantee, so I want to just make sure, I mean, we do have, you know, stating that they will, but, um. We are asking for this to come out.
Mister Chair, yes. Uh, uh, thank you, Mister Chair, so. When this. It, cause assuming, no, presuming, I hate the word assume, presuming the, the state does reimburse us, that money will go back into contingency?
No, I'd have to ask, um. Pompol Foley, who's not here today, he's actually at the same conference, um, but I, I would assume.
Sure, Kelly, you had some. Okay, uh, any public comment? Don't see any hands or anything on the board. Um, Commissioner Henderson, you have something for?
Yeah, just a question could, and this is probably for the district attorney, could our motion? Um, include a requirement that if the state reimburses us, that the, the funds get returned to contingency? Could that be part of the motion, or is that?
Steve Ry, District Attorney. I think that sounds more like an accounting question.
Right.
Unfortunately, Josh isn't here. I think you could make that motion subject to the comptroller's approval, but I'll defer to.
Chairman Hockaday, I would just make a comment that if we pigeonhole ourselves on something like that, the state may say, well, it's supposed to go. Yeah. Back to here, since you made a motion, we're not gonna reimburse you. I would caution us on putting demands on. I don't know.
Do you want to answer that?
What?
I've done.
I, Andrew Haskin, so I think that's. That that's a good point. Um, I don't, I don't have an answer on that, to be quite honest, um, knowing comptroller Foley, I'm sure that. Uh, I mean, we'll get back to the proper fund, that, that it's, uh, that it's supposed to be in, I don't know that it needs to be addressed in the motion, but. But I think it could go be the right.
Thank you, sir. I, I agree with you, uh. Mister Haskin, I'm pretty confident that, uh, Mister Foley will do whatever is possible for him to do. And most likely get it back to the correct area. As long as we get reimbursed, I'm sure it'll all go towards the county requirements. Uh, but yes, uh, Commissioner Keller.
I just had a comment on that, uh, I have my full trust in Josh Foley, as far as him take care of his, uh, department. And Stacy Lindberg has, uh, done everything to be more productive and save us money and, and, uh, with her department, so. Uh, between, uh, those two, I think that I'm pretty happy with just making a motion to. To approve of, if you need a motion.
Yeah, I'll take a motion on that, please.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of central ballot scanning system with shipping in the amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. To be funded from a budget to transfer from general fund and contingency.
Have a second? Okay. Have a, uh, motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so I have a five or a four one, I'm sorry. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to County Manager nineteen A for possible action, approve the August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three Code Enforcement Workshop minutes. Uh, this was a request to, uh, have some changes made by Commissioner Keller and. Uh, changes were made to the minutes and presented, so Commissioner Hathor, I'm sorry. I'm demoting you.
Right.
And County Manager Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. Um, yeah, so at the last meeting, there was some discussion on the minutes from the Code Enforcement Workshop. Um, and so the board had asked for. Um, myself and for the district attorney to go back and re-review the. Video and take a look at the minutes, and so, uh, District Attorney Ry provided some amendments to. The minutes based on not reviewed, and so, um, they're attached as. Um, as back to, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Keller.
Not a question, but more of a, uh, statement, and I'm happy with the corrections that were made. That, uh, fit what, what I was asking for. And, uh, for the record, I just wanted to make a statement that, uh, if we have to leave the daisies, if anybody has to, it's gonna be on, uh. The onerous is gonna be on that commissioner to whether or not to disclose or what happened out there to bring it back forward, so. Uh, I'm very happy with the way. It's written.
Yeah, and, and my objection basically at that point was that I will never remove anything from the minutes, but I will certainly expand them. To make a, you know, uh, a more clear point of what happened. And, you know, I, I guess the chairman can ask whatever they want of the commissioners, but I, I really believe that if someone's going to get up. And go do whatever, that it's always a good idea to, to let people know, hey, I need to take a break, or I need to go back, or I need to whatever, and then take a pause. So that it's not a disruption to anybody getting up and walking away. People are, I mean, I've noticed heads turn like, well, what's going on? Uh, so I'm just trying to maintain, uh. An environment where nobody is interrupted. So, Commissioner Keller.
And, uh, my apologies to this board if I was, if I was taking that into that direction, I, my. My thing was, I thought I could just get a quick thing, come back up there and, and not hold up to, for a recess and stuff like that, so. In the future, I'll, I'll just make the, the request for the recess to, to do so. In the future, I'll I'll just make the the request for the recess to to do so.
Thank you, appreciate that. So we're ready to accept the minutes as changed, if I can get a, or I should say, public comment first, see anything. Thank you, Mr. Haskin, and I'm looking for a motion on nineteen A.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
As soon as I find it. I set it down. Make a motion to approve the August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three code enforcement workshop minutes as presented, second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We've already done nineteen B, so we are on the final nineteen C item here for County Manager for possible action review and discuss draft lands bill map. And provide direction to the County Manager on what should be included in a Lyon County lands bill. Go ahead, sir.
All right, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, I will bring up the map here in a second, and I'll go ahead and introduce item. Jeremy, don't worry, you moved on me. Jeremy Drew will handle a lot of the presentation. But I just wanted to provide some background, so. As the board is aware, the board directed staff to work on exploring the possibility of a Lyon County lands bill, and staff's been doing so for the last couple of years. And so working through that process, we worked through a number, worked with a number of entities. And and county staff to determine what. What should be included in a lands bill. From the county's perspective, we're looking at lands that are needed for different infrastructure projects for county needs. And there's a number of requests that you'll see on the map that will be presented today. At this time, I am recommending that the the Board of Commissioners and staff to. Split in a lands bill into two pieces, basically a North Lyon County lands bill and a South Lyon county. The reason for that is because I believe that the. Pieces in the north part of the county are a little bit further along, I think we're ready for that, I think that there's an opportunity here in the short term. To get something introduced in Congress. And with the the pieces in the south part of the county, we're still working with the various entities, trying to figure out. You know, what that would look like, and so in interest of not holding up the the pieces in the north and to acquire this, the piece that. The county needs for various infrastructure projects, so we can get going, the second bridge and the drainage being one of them. I I recommend that we move that forward, and so that's what is presented today, you'll notice in the maps, there's nothing in the south part of the county. That wasn't changed, so with that alternate order to Jeremy Drew, and I'll bring up the maps, and of course, I'll be here for questions of the discussion.
Sure, Chairman Commissioners, good morning, for your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts Incorporated. As you know, we've been working with the County Manager and appropriate staff. Identify parcels of land generally along the U S fifty corridor that are of value to the county and may warrant conveyance as part of a North County lands bill. We've identified approximately twenty-six hundred acres that we believe are of value in the short midterm. And an additional thirty-four hundred acres approximately that we would believe are of value in the mid to long term. What I'll do is step briefly through the map that's up on the screen and describe each parcel. And realizing this is the first step in a more robust process going forward with input to be provided by citizens advisory boards. In the coming months to solicit their input. So the way the map is set up, we kind of numbered our parcels from west to east as if you're reading a book. And again, I'll just step through those ones that were proposing initially for conveyance. Parcels one and two are ten acres each, both are identified already in the R M P, the existing B L M R M P is suitable for disposal. Both have infrastructure in them roadways, and it would make life a lot easier for county staff if the county owned those parcels rather than having to go to B L M. Anytime they wanted to improve the existing infrastructure or add infrastructure. Parcel three is twenty-seven acres that we would be requesting, also identified for B L M is suitable for disposal, this is the library and senior center. Parcel number four again is an infrastructure item, one hundred and twenty-one acres are requested, identified by B L M is suitable for disposal. Roads and pipelines both in that parcel. Parcel number five, we would be requesting ten acres out of a much larger parcel. This is one of two that is not identified by B L M is suitable for disposal. But it does contain a county water tank and then the the road and the the pipelines coming out of that as infrastructure going away from it. Parcel six, seven, eight, and ten are all associated with the flood project. Three of the four are already identified for disposal in the R M P. You've got nine hundred and twenty-one, four hundred and ninety-three, three hundred and twenty-two, and three hundred and sixteen acres respectively, so sizable section of land there south of Dayton. Again, this is all the the flood project and the road project. And part of the reason that we've requested maybe more than those specific footprints is to make sure we have adequate space. For final design and and clearances and everything else on those parcels. Parcel nine is forty acres marked for disposal, that would be for a future fire station. Parcel eleven, seven acres, it is not identified by D L B L M for suitable as disposal, but there is already a seven acre lease to the county for a repeater tower. And so the request there is to transfer that to the county. That is very similar, while I'm on that, to item or parcel thirteen, where we're simply looking for an acre. Again, to to pick up the repeater tower and to match the existing lease area on that. Parcel. Twelve would be twenty-eight acres identified by B L M is suitable for disposal. Again, that would be infrastructure, there's been talk there of a regional park or other infrastructure, it's like right along Highway fifty. And then parcel fourteen, three hundred and twenty-five acres approximately identified as B L M suitable for disposal, and that's. The the southern portion of a section that contains the firmly lands bill. Or excuse me, firmly firmly land bill, not the lands bill. Freudian slip, so those, again, that totals to two thousand six hundred and thirty-two acres of lands that we would be requesting. For conveyance directly to the county, the next table is more specific to future parcels. So this may be parcels that we request that that Congress put a hold on, so we might ask them to withdraw from. Any new authorizations with the idea that they could be valuable to the county going forward for various reasons. So again, we've kind of broken these out. As with their own numbering system and F for future. So again, one F is eighty acres identified by B L M is suitable for disposal, that would be for road infrastructure. Two F would be eighty-one acres that is not identified as this as suitable for disposal, infrastructure, future road and pipeline. Parcel three F. Ninety-seven acres identified by B L M is suitable for disposal, which would be infrastructure, future flood control. And a potential connection on a roadway there. Four F. One hundred and sixty-one acres identified by B L M is suitable for disposal for infrastructure for a water system. Five, five F, one hundred and fifty-nine acres not identified by B L M is suitable for disposal. Infrastructure for a potential future wastewater treatment plant. Six F, we're looking for roughly twenty-eight hundred acres. Part of this is identified by B L M is suitable for disposal, this is along the USA Parkway, and this would be community expansion and economic development. So that totals thirty-four hundred and eighteen acres, again, those are for possible future conveyances, so kind of a mid to long term play on those parcels. Commissioners, I would just note that obviously the Firmly Economic Development Act is introduced by Congressman Amade in the House. I don't believe a companion bill has been identified in the Senate, as I understand it, that's roughly fourteen thousand acres. It is not currently on our map, certainly we could add that to our map, we just didn't want to confuse the two at this point until we had more direction. From this board. But we could, again, we could add it to the map, or we could always call out county support in a future resolution that moves forward. This county's desire to to Congress. Once we know what to include in the map, again, we can fix that. Add and subtract or revise as necessary, and then ultimately kind of the next step before it would go to Congress would be some sort of resolution of support. From this body to Congress so they know exactly what you all want. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commissioners.
I got a few. Only three pages. So this is more about the process, so if you just kind of fill me in on the process a little bit. Once this passes, if it passes Congress and comes back as the lands bill to us, and this is, I'm directing this at the firmly's. Ask what they're doing. How does it transfer to firmly, is it direct to firmly, or does it go through the county? And if it does go through the county and then firmly takes it, and then what is the process to go to individual developer at that point? And where I'm going with that is is the timeframes of how they go out, how they separate it out, what the open bid process looks like if it is one. And. Where does the liability land, and so we've got a lot of fires season, stuff like that that happens, they're roughly asking for three quarters. Seventy, this total acreage is three times as much as what they've got developed right now. So it's going to be a lot of a big ask, a big section of the county, it's going to eliminate a lot of our outdoor recreation and stuff like that, I've gone. Hunting up there, I've never killed anything, but I shot it a lot, but. That's going to be gone. So what I was looking at, and and this didn't come before us, this was all city firmly, and I agree with Mark Amade, you know, he. He his job is to present whatever we come up with, and so. I'm looking at who is who's liable for the fires. I assume that would be central or anything else that happens up there, until it goes to the the last landowner. So fires, law enforcement. Because that's a county sheriff, not, it's not a city firmly police department. Also, I'm curious about the tax revenue, because if it's undeveloped property. And it's kind of, and I'm saying it's three quarters, seventy-five percent bigger than, three times bigger than city firmly. While it isn't getting developed, it reverts back to just bare land, which under. The federal government, at least we get the pro the the funding. With the expectations that we could build there, where this will be just straight up bare land until it is built. So what what is the cost of that is something I'd like to see. And. We're basically cosigning this. Right, Mark Amade's office isn't, we are, so if if anything fails, does everything go to Lyon County and. And the cost of everything go dispersed amongst everybody else. So everybody else's dollars will go to support this if it fails. So that's where I'm kind of teach me.
Sure, so Commissioner Keller, I think we're going to tag team the answer on this, but I'll take your first couple of points, so. Your first question was, who would the land go to, and this is reading directly out of the Firmly Economic Development Act that's introduced right now. So it says conveyance, subject to valid existing rights, the secretary shall convey to the city defined as a city of firmly. For fair market value, all right, title and interest of the United States and and to the federal land, so. In terms of your first question, who would it go to, city affirm. As directed by Congress, there's a whole process administrative wise, it comes off the back end, if this were to pass Congress, they still have to do N I P A. Actions, they have to do a phase one environmental site assessment, all the cadastral survey pieces. All of that would have to go through city of firmly, there would have to be an appraisal, and ultimately, city of firmly would be responsible for paying that appraised fair market value. As I understand it, your next question on liability, the liability would be firmly on the city as the owner at that point. But there is no limitation in terms of what they could do with that in the future, so if they wanted to turn around and sell that. They certainly could do that because they would be the owner once the administrative process is is done. I think I answered the the two questions that I'm capable of answering, but I might turn it over to Andrew to address the tax portion of that question.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Before I get to that part, I do kind of want to address why we would include this as part of our lands bill, ask if it's already been included in Congress, so. On the on the congressional side. So. The Senate has released some guidelines. Earlier this year that basically require lands bills to be led at the county level. And so while the the House side doesn't have that such a requirement, the Senate side does. And so we are proposing to include this as a part of that, so that we as a part of our lands bill, so that it doesn't hold things up. For the firmly, so whatever resolution that we would. Draft, my recommendation would be to basically include it as it is presented currently in the legislation that's already introduced. So that it was still transferred directly to the situation, but be a part of a larger county.
So including what we just talked about to this, does that speed up our process as well?
As far as the the North Lyon County lands bill?
Yes, and that's already been submitted, the firmly part?
Yeah, I I believe essentially, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we would be asking, it would be an amendment to what is already been. Been. Of course, we would have to work with Congressman Amade's office on that, so I, you know, I would have to work out those details and then bring something back to the board. That would be how the process would work. On the question of taxes, so Commissioner Keller is right, so we do get. Pilled funds from federal lands in Lyon County, payment and little taxes. And roughly that that equals about. I think it's about two, two dollars an acre currently.
It's gone up.
It and and that's that's an average, because each parcel is different. And to Commissioner Keller's point, if it was under private ownership and the fact that it's not developed currently, that it would. You know, kind of revert back to the assessment based on. Undeveloped land, which would be less, again, that is based on on each parcel, you're talking about twelve. Twelve thousand acres, right? Fourteen thousand, is it fourteen?
Yeah.
Roughly fourteen thousand acres, so two dollars an acre, that kind of tells you what that. So. Anyway, like I said, this is already a request from the city of firmly, we're we're just trying to kind of forward along their. Their request on the Senate side, that that's the intent.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just a couple of comments on this. I I agree with with splitting the county. We're not ready on the southern end of the county to to put a lands bill forward, I think staff has done an excellent job. Identifying parcels in the north end of the county that we we need. And I think we need to get that process started. I am in favor of including the the firmly land, the firmly proposition in our lands bill. With the the clear distinction, obviously, that lands that that are going to firmly county goes directly to the the city of firmly. And the lands that we want are transferred directly to Lyon County. You know. One one comment on the the tax issue. Is if the lands bill goes through and the lands are transferred to the city of firmly, we get no revenue on that until they sell the land back and put it back in in. Private hands and it goes back on the tax roll. Again, twenty-eight thousand dollars a year is not going to make or break the county. So I I'm I'm in favor of moving forward with this as you have presented it with the inclusion of the firmly piece.
And just for a little clarification, I guess, on process, so if if the board directs staff to move forward with what has been presented today or with changes. I will immediately get on the calendar for the citizens advisory boards for the communities that this would affect. And go start getting public comments, set up a meeting with the B L with B L N and with. Congressman Amade's office and begin to work with that process out, this would come back to the board, it's not like it's gonna. If it's approved today, it's not going to be a done deal, it'll come back to the board in the form of a. If there's recommended changes in updated map and a resolution that would get submitted. You know, presented back to to the board for approval before it gets submitted, so.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I can, can I get a copy of that act? I can can I get a copy of that act? And I'd also, if there are any agreements between the city of firmly. And future purchaser, I'd like to see that as well, just so that I have all the information.
Absolutely.
Um, could you just spell out again, kind of for the record and for some of the folks sitting here? Where that? The boundary is between the North Lion County and the South Lion County um lands bill. What what kind of what's the line of demarcation there?
Um. Andrew Haskin for the record, I don't know if there's an official line. Um, the furthest south piece that we're asking for is basically um that. Repeater site that we have on Raw Peak. Um. Yeah, so that's that's basically the furthest south we're looking, basically just south of the Carson River. Which is. Kind of a general, I I I would say this Carson River, but we do have subtle pieces that we're looking for on.
Right, I we're talking north and south line county and and I just want to make sure that we're. Clear on kind of where we're. Making decisions for maybe today. Thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
So the reason why I was bringing up the firmly piece and everything else, because when you have the third party that's actually going to take. Take a control of the land. We can, as a county, uh, make demands. Before we sell a piece of property, we can make a, like if it's a solar field or something going out there, we could say. We need a fire services, you know, a truck that will enable us to work there. There's negotiations that take take uh. You know, we go through the process. Firmly bypassed us on this process, so we won't have any say in that in that what goes out there, but yet our sheriff is going to be responsible for out there. So I want us to have a. Uh, part of that negotiations when it comes forward. Their central line county is in their district. It's uh, not central, I mean northern. So they they've got the fire, they've got everything that they can within the city. The sheriff is a concern. Because they're going to have to start watching that, and it's a county entity.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner.
I had one other question. Um, if we ask for this and it's approved and everything, if if there's any piece of this that we decide we don't need, are we still obligated to purchase it?
Yeah, that's uh for your record, Jeremy Drew with Resource Concepts. That's a fantastic question, Commissioner. Um, I think a lot of it's going to come down to how the bill gets written. Uh, and quite frankly, I think, you know, the way the city of firmly bill is is written, it kind of allows transfer that whole fourteen thousand acres in one shot. Um, what I might recommend and something that we have to talk with both congressional. Uh, House and and Senate staff on is we may want to look at um saying something like. Upon request by the county, these parcels may be may be transferred. Uh, and that way, if we need to further refine uh or stage how we pick those parcels up, because maybe we don't have the funding to pick up all twenty-six hundred acres in one shot. We do that. Um, and so I think we could. The the way we write that language, and we're obviously not there yet. Uh, would dictate now how that land comes, and if it all comes in one shot, or we phase it upon request. I think there's some real value to phasing it quite briefly, uh, but that's just my personal thing. A great question.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one comment, it'd be shall, not may. Shall be transferred, not maybe transferred upon request to the county.
Correct. Something I am asking for the record, um, something I did want to bring up, uh, any lands that we do request, um, you know, as part of the Lion County. The county still does have to pay um fair market value for for those lands. It's not like it comes to the county for for free. In addition, we also have to um, you know, do all the environmental studies and whatnot. There's cost for that. Um, there are ways to offset that cost that um. And and you know, that's something that we can get into. Further later on down the road. Um, still in the process of exploring all that, but um. I do want to make the board aware and and the public aware that it's not like. We we don't have to pay anything for this, so.
Okay.
That's why the phasing approach makes makes a lot of sense.
And and right now, we're looking for a direction as to whether we split north and south, so. Uh, any further questions then from commissioners? If not, we'll go on to any public input. Com comments.
I'm Tim Steeper. I live in that area. Uh, of Dayton that has. Flooded repeatedly. Uh. I'm also a director of the. Uh, Dayton Valley Property Corporation. There are a lot of people that are really angry about the continued flooding. And not visible action to do something about it. Uh, I would request that. Be some effort, I don't know exactly how to. Talk to the people in Dayton area. And let them know what's being done. To handle flooding problem. Because, you know, a submitting every once in a while or something, so people can go and find out that maybe something's going to eventually happen. A lot of people continue to get flooded out. I never have flooded, but my whole area is covered at least an inch. It's never made it in house yet. But. Almost there.
Yeah. Thank you. Anything further? All right. So we're looking at the giving guidance to the county manager on this issue. Uh, do we have any? Thing further? Um.
Um, just a question, Chairman Hockaday, for clarification for my one thinking about this. Is this? Does there need to be a motion for dividing into two north and south? And then? In the north lands bill? Or? Is this all part of one would be part of one motion?
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. I don't know that the north and south piece needs to be a part of um the motion, although it certainly can be. Uh, well, actually, I need to check district twenty-six on that because the way it's worded, um. Basically, um. Actually, if you can give me just a second.
I'll give you a second, sir.
I I think I can make a shot at it.
Yeah, I'm. Pretty sure we can. You have a mind that we covered.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. So, um, actually, it hasn't been agenda is necessarily just split it up in north and south. So what the agenda item is looking for is direction based on. The maps that have been presented today, um. We would still continue to work on um. The south piece and bring that forward. When it's a little bit better defined, it's possible that. Prior to this getting passed through Congress, um, the south piece catches up and then maybe do another amendment. Um, that obviously would be for consideration of. To the board at a later.
So basically, we're looking at. Giving you direction to work with the lands that you have identified today. To move forward and get the process completed so that we can present it to Congress.
Correct.
That would be my understanding of what we did today. Okay.
Is that a motion? I said, is that a motion? He's just not. Uh, I I'll be happy to make one.
I I. I would put motion in front of it, but I think uh Commissioner Henderson spoke up too, so.
Yeah, uh, so thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to to move that we direct staff. To continue working on. A lands bill at the lands that were identified on the map as presented today. But to include the firmly. I don't know what the whole title of the bill is, but that there's a firmly portion in that. And to start the process of um public involvement. To develop the Lions County lands bill, at least for the a as identified.
Second, okay. So motion by Commissioner Harrison and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Hey, that motion passes five zero.
Mr. Chair, if I may, real quick, I I just I just want to say, Jeremy, I just want to thank you and R C I for all your work on this. You you guys are the best outfit in the company, and we're glad you're on our glad to join our team.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Drew. Appreciate your presentation. Uh, we're going to move on to agenda requests. Um. Start with Commissioner Hendrick.
I don't have any this time.
Commissioner Henderson.
I have several. Get going. And and they they. Obviously, not all at the same meeting, but I would like for us to invite the chiefs of the fire protection districts in Lion County to come give a presentation to us. On the. On, you know, this status on of their. Districts. I think we I'd also like to invite the mayors and or city managers from Urington and firmly to do the same thing, give us a briefing on that. And while we're at it, we could invite the superintendent of the school district. To give a presentation to us.
Okay. That all of them is it? Commissioner Keller. Yeah.
Last night that at firmly, they had the. They did an action item. Uh, to look into possibility annexing the county land islands within the city limits, which is quite a big, their city limits go all the way down to Damon's curve, so. It's a lot of land. I just wanted to either an agenda item or at least uh report of how that affects us. If it does at all.
Mr. Jacobson. And I'll just remind the uh. County manager, the couple of agenda items that we need to look at from resolutions of other. Counties that have been presented, and we need to discuss here for either support or denial. Um. Anything further before I move on? Commissioner comments. Go with Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I um. I've been looking for, I love traveling to Elko. Um, unfortunately, it looks like Tuesday I may be going in for surgery on my arm. So I don't know if I'll be present at Naco, um, but I do apologize, uh. To my fellow commissioners if I'm not present there, depending on how it goes Tuesday afternoon.
Commissioner Keller.
Oh, nothing.
Nothing. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just looking forward to Naco. Uh, it's al- always good to meet with your colleagues from across the state. And uh, the 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 program that Naco puts on, so looking looking forward to the to the trip.
Uh, Commissioner Hendricks. You're good. And my final comment will be tomorrow, the twenty-second September. Remember, the hospital has a presentation at the Pioneer Crossing Convention. Room um for the second phase of life. Um, please consider that. Uh, we all know we'll need senior help in the future. I'm getting closer. And um. They will have some experts there to talk about how to take care of your estate and set things up for the future in case you need that help. Uh, if there's nothing else, do we have a closed session today?
No close session today.
Uh, we'll go to our final public participation, or actually, we take any item to properly agenda is anticipated. The public participation may be held at this time. But maybe return to him to at any time during the agenda. Uh, citizens wishing to speak. I see we have one already. Uh, step up, place state your name for the record, and you'll be limited to three minutes, and we will not. Um, uh, public comment will be uh. After each item, we're done with that. So, uh, sir, if you'd like to press on, go for your public comment.
For the rest. For the record, Russ Wright again. Um. I don't know what this board. Uh, finds Shayla spending to find affordable housing in in this county for displaced persons. I'm privy to a report that in the Socialist Republic on the other side of the mountain. The average cost is six hundred seventy thousand dollars per affordable housing unit. Except in the seat of the Socialist Republic, Sacramento at six hundred ninety-two thousand. So whatever Shayla is getting affordable housing in this county. But considerably less than that, you guys are getting a good deal. And then I apologize for alluding to agenda items, but. Uh, it's worthy of consideration that Endot. In expanding Highway Fifty isn't dealing with water or Indians to have the same dilemma that. DA Ri has in thirty years down the road for a traffic to.
Anything further online? Oh, okay, no, Mr.
Chairman, uh, for your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist, Resource Concepts. Um, I've kind of updated you all along the way, but one more update on the Community Welfare Protection Plan that R C I is helping. Develop in coordination with your four fire protect protection districts. And N D F, a draft plan is put together. Uh, which we've done in close coordination with those fire districts. Um, it's about ready to go out to public comment and participation. Um, there will be a formal press release on October first with details, and we'll get that to the county manager. To share with you all, uh, but just some save the dates. Uh, each of these meetings would be at the Fire Protection Districts from six to eight P M. Uh, so we'll be in Smith Valley on Tuesday, October tenth. Mason Valley on Wednesday, October eleventh. Uh, North Valley is up there in firmly Monday, October twenty-third. And Central Lion on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth. Uh, just to give the commission an update on that, we may be coming back at the end of the year or early twenty twenty-four for approval. Remember, this would also open the door for some more federal funding. Uh, for projects associated with hazard fuel reductions, public education and outreach. Or other fire protection measures. And so I think important to the county. And I would just mention that we really appreciate, uh, Taylor Allison has been a great help from the county. In interfacing with us and the county and the fire districts. Uh, and we appreciate all that participation. So just a quick update. For y'all on that, and hopefully you can make one of our public public meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Uh, yes, Commissioner Keller.
Can not, can those dates and stuff be put in our minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, that. Very good point. Get get it out there so everybody can read it. Okay, and we have no close session today. From my understanding. And it is now eleven thirteen, and I am going to adjourn the meeting.